For benefits and salaries. And similarly with the 15, 16 unaudited actuels. If we took out the one-time mandated cost funds, we spent 89.4 percent of our funding on salaries and benefits in 15, 16. The ending balance is fluctuating. You can see that we ended the year with a 21.4 percent ending fund balance. And we're projecting with the large $10.4 million deficit to reduce that percentage down to 13.3 percent at the end of 16, 17. This slide just kind of shows you some of the mandated cost allocations. I think we've covered that, so I'll just skip through this one. And here we have a two-year projection. So since we were bringing to the board such a large deficit, we wanted to do a forward look assuming nothing changes with the budget. So the way this projection works is, as I just mentioned, we are projecting that our ending fund balance in 16, 17 will be the $17,865,000. And it had a deficit in it of 10.4 million. Since we do a rollover budget, what that means is the budget that we have in 16, 17 is our starting point for 17, 18. So what we're doing here is we're saying, okay, starting with 16, 17, what are the changes that we know or are projecting will change in the 17, 18 year? So under the apportionment changes, we are projecting that the state will provide us 1.11 percent in COLA. And so we've added in 1.2 million. We are also projecting that we will no longer get the 1.9 million in the one-time mandated cost money, so we're taking that out. We are projecting that we need to hire 31 full-time faculty for fall of 17. And so offsetting that with the reduction in part-time faculty, when you hire full-time faculty, typically your part-time faculty goes down. We're projecting that to cost $2.4 million. The other salary and benefit changes here that you show, this is our step and column increases. So step and column, that's just where employees are progressing on the salary schedules, just by the fact that they've been here a year, so they move up a step. Or if they get, on the faculty side, if they get additional education, they can move up on a column. So when we say step and column, that's the movement on the salary schedule that just happens on the natural year after year. That's about 1.2 million for us. And then we've also included in here our health and welfare increases, assuming about a 5 percent increase to that, as well as the pers and stirs increases. So those four things combined, we're projecting is going to cost us the $3,488,000 in 17, 18, that we don't have in the budget today. And then we're adding back 6.5 million, because that includes the 5.5 million for the BPRs that if we spend it all, we won't have it in 17, 18, as well as the mandated cost changes and the presidential search. So some of those one-time things we've allocated, we're adding back in. So what that means is, if all of this were to occur, we didn't receive any additional funding from the state, we would have almost a $10.5 million deficit in our 17, 18 budget, which would bring our ending fund balance down to just under 7.4 million or 5.5 percent. Doing the same thing in 18, 19. As you can see, if nothing changes in 18, 19, we will have completely spent our ending fund balance, and we'll have a negative ending fund balance. So I think what this slide is trying to project is that if we don't get additional funding from the state, or if we can't grow in our FTES, then we're going to have to start making some difficult decisions on where are we going to reduce our expenditures, so that we can maintain a prudent level of fund balance moving forward. And I will say that with these projections, we haven't put any projections in here for salary increases for any of the bargaining units. This is just the known step and column changes, and the known pers and stirs increases and that type of thing. So--
Madam Chair? Sorry, excuse me. Vice President Gable, thank you. I'm doing the best I can to follow and understand as you go, so I'm sorry if I have too many questions or ask for clarification. I can appreciate the very conservative projections. I think they're great. In fact, I'd rather err on the side of caution and be conservative than not. But in looking at previous years, you know, we always end up with a surplus. It appears as if we always end up doing well, so I don't want to be too conservative. And the only reason I'm saying this is because you kind of added a footnote in your presentation as far as that you haven't actually addressed salary increases for the bargaining units. So while it is prudent to be conservative, at the same time, you know, in looking at our previous budgets and looking at our trends, I mean, we've, you know, our 2016, 2017 projection of 17 million, we actually ended in 15, 16 with 28 million. So we did well. That 10 million difference, surely we can afford to do some salary negotiating there. And again, I feel an obligation to say that, because you added the footnote that the salaries had not been reviewed. And then also, I just want to add that in your presentation overall, I really appreciate how student-centered it is. And I really appreciate it. It appears as if the majority of the decisions in the budget that have been made are really student-focused. And with that, I think that the quality of the faculty and the classified, the quality of the services that they provide should be compensated fairly, and they should be, because they're at the front line dealing with students. So just, you know, my two cents on so far, very thorough, very good presentation. I just want to make that point to add to what you said. Thank you.
If I can add to that, Trustee Malauulu. And I think this is a point that comes up many times throughout the years about how the community college budget works, and why do we show surpluses? And I think it's a very legitimate question. It's certainly asked repeatedly a budget advisory committee. A lot of the surplus are one-time funds, which is the caution that we have. And I mean, you're correct that the last few years, we've had a healthy fund balance. But remember, four years ago, we were laying off employees. It will change that quickly. And you're committing the district every time you increase salary to permanent ongoing expenses. And I'm not saying that you shouldn't. I'm just saying that you're going to have to be making choices along the way for the next three to four years. Your budget will be reduced. There is no question in my mind that over the next three years, your budgets will be reduced. So the challenge for the board will be to balance those discussions. And of course, every time we commit permanent salaries, it's got to come out somewhere when the revenue declines. Because if you do get down to some of these ending fund balances, you're going to get a call from Sacramento putting you on a watch list. It's something we haven't had to talk about here in many years. But it is a major concern in the state. We're hopeful that Proposition 55 will pass. That will help smooth out the next budget downturn. But remember, we just hired 100-plus new faculty. Their salaries are going to continue to increase, even if you hire no one significantly over the next few years. Now, does that mean? The challenge always with community college budgets is we don't know what's going to happen next year. And that's the problem. We are only given one-year budgets. We can't project out two years, three years. So I think what Ann Marie is doing is saying, if nothing changed, this is where you're going to be. Hopefully, something changes. But every time we make a commitment, you know, we can predict the commitment, we can't predict the future funding. So that is my only word of caution to the board. And, you know, you will be living with the decisions you make, in good times and in bad times. And the state isn't always very kind to us in the bad times. So that's the only word of caution. Certainly, absolutely, our frontline staff deserve every bit of compensation that the district can provide them. All I would caution you is to make sure that you're balancing today's commitment with some of the issues that will come up tomorrow.
Can I--
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I was very worried about these things earlier this year, when it looked like Prop 30 was, you know, that nothing was going to happen. And then the state, I know, thinks about these things, too, and they're trying to move monies around. If you look at, and maybe I'm sneaking ahead here, but if you look at the sunset of Prop 30 revenues, $17.2 million, over the next couple of years, I'm just going to presume that the state's going to try and do, to make some adjustments for that if that happens. But give me a picture of what that looks like, how it might happen, just so we have a vision.
So right now, the 21 percent from sales tax, the sales tax is set to expire December 31st of this year. The state has already taken into account the expiration of that sales tax, and is not assuming that it will be there. So the budget that we have for 16, 17 has that assumption in there. The income tax and what Proposition 55 is doing is extending that termination for another five years, I think until 2021. So, you know, I think as President Oakley-- President Oakley said--
How soon we forget. He's not even gone yet.
I was going to say his first name, and then I was combining his first and last name. So anyways. As President Oakley mentioned, it will help the state smooth out their revenues. In the projections that they did, the out-year projections, when the governor put his budget out, they didn't assume anything would come forward with the extension of the income taxes. So with, if Proposition 50 were to pass, it will alleviate some of the pressures that will be on the state's budget moving forward. You know, the other thing that I think is looming is another economic downturn. You know, I don't know if it'll be a recession, but there will be an economic downturn. You know, we are in, I think, the seventh year of recovery, which is one of the longest time spans of a recovery since a recession. So it will be coming. You know, I think our budgets will be cut in the future, probably within the next three years, as President Oakley mentioned. So it is something that I think is looming in the future. How far into the future, we don't know.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Trustee Kellogg.
So the question really, because for two of us that sat through those meetings of having this chamber packed with people month after month, telling us how wrong we were to make any cuts, had no choice, there was a process involved. And at that time, the question came up about, and I'll give the answer to the question, but they said, you know, we can't wait. The question was, well, why don't you wait till the November election to come up with your budget? And the answer, of course, is we cannot, we're not allowed to wait. We have to prepare the budget. But what we did then was take a budget, in that case, Proposition 30 passed, and another scenario where Proposition 30 did not pass. And I'll put it in very simple terms. If it didn't pass, we had on the block probably 20 to 21 programs that were going to be cut. If it did pass, rejoice, we only, we're going to cut 11, 12? I mean, it was a doomsday scenario, no matter how we looked at it. So the point is, in this budget, and thank goodness, we were extremely conservative as we were working through that, beginning in 2007, 2008, 2009, or else it would have been much worse. The question, though, a long commentary, is, did we look at the potential of what happens if? I think I was picking up on your answer, but if it does or does not pass with Proposition 55, I think it is now? Yeah. Famous semi-Hagar song, "I can't drive 55," so we'll see. But do, I think it was trustee Otto's point in here, the EPA or whatever it was, 14.73 percent. That's a big chunk of our budget that may be going away. And regardless, and you brought up a good point, we're probably going to have a little bit of an economic slowdown in the state of California with many things going on. You can see some of the issues, even locally, of events taking place. But so as we're doing, again, as we always budget, we're looking at multiple factors coming in, but we don't have the option of just waiting around. We have to make calls with projections. But as far as the scenario with Proposition 55, like we did in that last time, where it was very clear, we even told people that, that if it doesn't pass, this is what we're looking at. Have we got one of those scenarios, Ann Marie, on if it does and doesn't pass in here? That's what I was looking for. I know in those budgets, a long time ago, we actually had that in here, if I remember correctly.
We don't have that scenario in here at this point in time. Because since the governor did an out-year projection, assuming that it wouldn't pass, and they didn't have any estimations for cuts to community colleges, we didn't include it at this point in time.
So if it passes, then we will have an adjustment, and we'll have some relief, correct?
Potentially. You know, our budget is always up to the legislature and the governor, so they could find ways to redirect funding elsewhere. You know, the current Proposition 30 revenues are required to go to the K-14 system, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't take other state funding and move it elsewhere to where we would have a decrease in our other funding that isn't tied to Proposition 30. So, you know, you don't know what's going to happen legislative session to legislative session.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you finished?
I'm done.
Okay. Could I have a motion?
Unless there's more questions.
I just wanted to comment. Vice President Gable, I know that through the journey of this process, it's a very tedious, it's quite a comprehensive effort. I know my questioning may come across as though, you know, I get into the details that I need to approve. That's just how I learn. But I just want to commend you and your team, and take the time to really acknowledge you and your team. It's not an easy task, and a lot of times, the finance world is a very thankless job. So I want to thank you for the great job you do, and all of your team members, some of whom are here tonight, and applaud you for a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Kellogg, yes, thank you very much.
And the item came through, it was an earlier slide about with the presidential search, even though that's a simplistic, it's for the presidential search. But we've earmarked $100,000 for it. Very briefly, what is $100,000 going to include? What are we getting for that? Because I think, I think what we did, you just put a number out there that would cover the costs, but it may not cost. $100,000 goes through this process.
I hope it doesn't cost $100,000.
I wasn't planning on it at all, coming near that, but--
What it would cover would be the presidential search firm that we have, if there's any, you know, it's really up to the board. If the board wants to pay travel expenses for any potential candidates, that would come out of there. You know, that's assuming that we only have to go through the process once, you know. So, you know, I think if we go through the process once, we won't spend $100,000. If we have to go through the process a second time, we might get close to spending $100,000.
More and more. Trustee Otto.
I don't have a question.
Oh, okay. Oh, are you making a motion to approve the 2016, 17 adopted budget?
How did you know that?
Second.
Psychic. Okay. And seconded by trustee Zia.
Call for the question.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Thank you very much. 7.4, 2015, 16, CCFS-311 annual financial? No? Yes? Okay.
This is just the, this is the required state form. Is that a good layman's way of explaining it? So I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by trustee Kellogg, seconded by trustee Zia. Trustee Kellogg, would you, did you want an explanation?
I personally don't. As I said, it's just a statewide, it's this form that every district uses in the state of California, and sending it to the state. Correct, Ann Marie? I mean, did I just bungle that one?
Yes. Yeah, it details out every fund. The information that we went over with the budget is presented on the 311 report.
Call for the question.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye. Oh, aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
8.1, academic senate president.
Thank you, Dr. Baxter, and I want to thank Vice President Gable for giving me such a nice segue from a tough and very uplifting report to mine, so thank you. I'm kidding. Okay, first, I want to say I'm really happy that the Faculty Professional Development Area with Jerry Florence as the coordinator introduced our new faculty, or a portion of them, to you this evening. As already mentioned, Jerry has trained over 100 new faculty. Can't think of anybody better to work with the new faculty. Her love for the college and her knowledge of the college is unprecedented, so our new faculty are in good hands. We always thank Faculty Professional Development and the hundreds of faculty and the deans who spend a lot of time on the ground floor in hiring. And I'm glad we mentioned Dr. Long and Dr. Peterson. But I also want to say that the area of human resources is absolutely impacted by the number of hires that we're doing, and we never thank them. So I want to thank you, Rose, and your incredible staff. Nobody understands the workload that falls into your area with the amount of faculty, both full-time and part-time, that we hire. So thank you very much. I also want to say that Dr. Long and I chair the Hiring Priorities Committee. That work is getting underway already, and because, as you can see, we're anticipating hiring another large group of faculty for the 17, 18 year. We're working hand-in-hand with human resources, because we're trying to be a little more efficient in our timelines, training of our EEO reps, and getting the process of hiring priorities approvals done in such a time that we can start advertising these positions ahead of the curve, and then do our hiring in a much more timely fashion. So that's something that we've been working on with HR, and I want to thank you again for that. I also want to say that, as mentioned by Karen Roberts and a few others, that we were able to add an additional day to College Day, the pre-Collage Day workshop. I want to thank President Oakley for allowing us to do that. It was an innovative idea, and it was highly successful. I do want to thank Karen for her absolute skilled work with our part-time faculty, and the ability to get part-time faculty there for that day. We had about 300 faculty and staff attending on a day that normally we don't have anything. It was highly successful. We had a lead group present something called See Yourself in the Plan, that involved about 30 to 35 folks. And then something totally unexpected, one of our departments was so touched by the strategic plan, that they actually wrote a song and asked to sing it to everybody on College Day. So clearly, the strategic plan has had quite an effect on folks, which is more than we expected, but really great. So I want to thank everybody, including the College Day Committee, and the Lead Project Group, and everybody else who jumped in to make sure that both days were successful. I want to mention that our curriculum work is well underway, and you haven't had anything come to you in the last two meetings, because we haven't had a business meeting of the Curriculum Committee yet. That happens tomorrow. But the Curriculum Chair has trained, done the orientation and training of the Curriculum Committee. It's an ongoing process of training, and in the last few years, our Curriculum Chair, Kenna Hellman, has worked with Michelle Grimes Hellman and Dr. Long to increase efficiency, which goes hand-in-hand with the plan. And speaking of the plan, I want to say that a lot of the work in the plan, in Goals 1 and 2 and 3 really are a lot of curriculum work and efficiencies, and we're talking about pathways. And I was going to compliment Amy Smith on the work that she does with guided pathways. Big difference is, you see the end goal before you get started. In other words, a lot of times, we say, what major do you want to be? And they don't know, because they really don't know what that major does. So you start with, here's the careers that you can have if you do X, Y, Z. So it puts the student on a path with an end goal in mind, other than the achievement of just the degree. They actually know what careers they're going into, and they're guided along the way through internships and those kinds of supports. So a lot of work is already being done, as you heard tonight, and more work will be done in that, so it's exciting. The faculty are excited to dive into this, and I feel it's quite a privilege to get to do what I do, and work with the administration and the faculty in my role. So thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent President Oakley.
Thank you, Board President Baxter. I will be brief. I want to thank the student leadership for putting on a couple of great days of signing up for clubs, getting a lot of great information out. I know members of the board and others have already been thanked for coming out, but I wanted to thank the student leadership for doing a great job pulling that together. I also want to notify the board and the public that our Facilities Department received an award from the Chancellors' Office, the Chancellors' Office Sustainability Award for a recent project. Which project was it, Vice President Gable?
It was the expansion of the chiller plant, where we added the 900-ton tank to the LAC campus, as well as putting in the systems control, so their software system that is now running all of our HVAC units.
Yes, so our sustainability is, was recognized, you know, for the members of the college and the public who have been here for many years, you will recognize that as the trustee Kellogg Boiler Project of many, many years ago. So we've come a long way.
But I will say, it slated to save 730,000 kilowatt hours with that project. So that is a significant savings, and there were about 1,200 jobs that were put to work by doing that project.
Yes, so congratulations to the Bond Management Team, Facilities, and Administrative Services. So they'll go up to the next Board of Governors meeting to receive that award.
Is that enough to cancel classes for a day?
No.
I think you can cancel a board meeting, though.
Stipulated.
And then finally, in your report to the board, I just want to highlight that the mayor, Mayor Garcia recently recognized a couple of members of the college and the Mayor's Business Award. They're listed here, Ted Hyde and Vivian Shimoyama. I just wanted to congratulate them publicly for receiving that award from our mayor, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee reports. Let's start with trustee Malauulu.
I'm the student trustee.
Oh, student trustee. I did that last time, too. Oh, I'll hand you-- Oh, I'm sorry.
Tell us what we think of him.
Thanks.
And thank you for being so patient to sit here.